We're going to get underway here in a moment. I just wanted to remind everybody that this is the start of a new term. We have a whole new cast of characters up here tonight, so I'd ask that you bear with us as we all sort of adjust to our new roles. We have some folks who've not yet participated in a meeting, and we're going to all get through this in the best way that we can. If you would join me in a moment of prayer. God, grant us the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, the courage to change the things that we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. Call the January 8th, 2024 Lancaster City Council Meeting to order. Rise if you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Here.
Mr. Ailes?
Here.
Mr. Bizjack?
Here.
Mrs. Hoop?
Here.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Ms. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Wing?
Here.
Let the record reflect, all members of Lancaster City Council are present. Reading and disposal of the Journal.
One second, please. Apologies. There are three meeting, I'm sorry. There are regular meeting minutes dated December 11th, 2023, special meeting minutes dated December 19th, 2023, and organizational meeting minutes dated January 6th, 2024, all for City Council.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the Journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the Journal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is approved. Do we have any reports of city officials?
Yes, we have several. Email dated December 28th, 2023 regarding an annual piece of requested legislation for the Water and Wastewater Improvement Funds submitted by Denise Cruz, environmental engineer. Email dated December 28th, 2023 regarding requested legislation for appropriations to the Stormwater Projects Fund 6019 submitted by Denise Cruz, environmental engineer. Series of emails dated December 28th, 2023 regarding requested legislation for the solids handling facility engineering agreement submitted by Denise Cruz, environmental engineer. Email dated January 4th, 2024 regarding a request for legislation by Superintendent Sherry Hints. Email dated January 8th, 2024 regarding proposed committee member assignments submitted by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Those pass. Do we have any communications?
Yes. Email dated November 28th, 2023 to MNCO Legals with a request for publication. Series of emails with the Ohio Ethics Commission regarding the upcoming 2023 financial disclosure filing requirement for elected persons. Letter dated December 29th, 2023 from the Division of Liquor Control regarding a corrected street address for the sheet's proposed permit premises. Series of emails with Allison Emery of Underhill &amp; Hodge LLC regarding a notice of filing annexation petition and needed signature. Email dated January 4th, 2024 from David Hodge of Underhill &amp; Hodge LLC requesting a copy of the legislation related to the new CRA. Email dated January 5th, 2024 from Allison Emery of Underhill &amp; Hodge LLC with a list of surrounding properties related to an annexation petition filing. Notice of Legislative Authority of the Transfer of a Liquor License from Pink Cricket Restaurant, Inc., located at first floor and basement and patio 929 East Main Street, Lancaster, Ohio 43130, to LT Pizza Company LLC, DBA, Pink Cricket Restaurant located at first floor and basement and patio 929 East Main Street, Lancaster, Ohio 43130, submitted by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, 6606 Tussing Road, Reynoldsburg, Ohio 43068.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the communications. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Those pass. Do we have any special presentations?
There are none.
Do we have any petitions or memorials?
We do. A petition for an expedited Type II annexation for 45.1 acres and pleasant township was received on January 3rd, 2024 at 10:04 a.m. and is available online, or a copy can be requested by contacting the clerk.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to file, receive and file the petition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the petition. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes. Are there any, okay, at this time, we reached the portion of our meeting that we allow for public comment from voters and taxpayers. Do we have anybody who wishes to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Seeing none, we thank you for coming and attending the meeting. Are there any standing committee reports?
Yes. Finance Committee meeting minutes dated December 11th, 2023 submitted by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes. Are there any reports of special committees?
There are none.
Okay. Looks like there are no public hearings this evening.
No.
Okay. At this time, I believe there's a motion that we need to entertain.
Yep. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion and go out of the normal order of business to discuss assignments of committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go outside the regular order of business to discuss committee assignments. We need to call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
And with that, we are outside the regular order of business.
Just, okay, so everyone has, I sent everyone a copy or a text with proposed committee assignments for this term, so we need to, this is our opportunity to discuss, or if there is no discussion, to vote on accepting those assignments.
Is there any discussion regarding those committee assignments that have been provided to all the council members and to the clerk in writing? This time, if there is no discussion, I'd entertain a motion to accept those committee assignments.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the committee assignments as given to the clerk before the meeting.
And do we have a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to accept the committee assignment as presented to the clerk in writing before the meeting. Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Okay. The committee assignments passed by council from, how many people do we have now?
Nine.
Nine to zero. We're hoping that we have 10 soon, so. At this time, we're going to take a brief five-minute recess while we're still outside the regular order of business to discuss committee assignments, so we can proceed with the rest of the meeting. And then, before we go back into the regular order of business, we'll take updates from department heads. So just give us five minutes, and we'll be right back. Where are we going?
Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Taylor with Habitat for Humanity of Southeast Ohio. Here at Habitat for Humanity, our mission is simple. We bring the community together to build strength, stability, and self-reliance through shelter. Achieving this mission is made possible with the support of generous local partners like the Buckeye Cares Program. That means Buckeye will make a donation with every vehicle sold this month. From all of us at Habitat for Humanity, we say thank you, Buckeye, for once again offering your generous support.
We have to do our committee assignments, and then, as people sponsor legislation, it requires committee chairs and seconds from the committees to do the legislation. While we're still outside the order of regular business, at this time, we're going to ask if there are any department head updates for council.
Good evening. You should have received an email from Steve Gayfield, and I didn't hear it in the reports of city officials, but we did close Miller Park today. We're in the process now of starting to install lines across the park, so we have to run sewer lines from the north end of the park to the south end of the park, and water lines from the south end of the park to the north end of the park. So that's what we'll be doing for the next few months, and we needed to get it done during the winter, so it'll be open again when the swimming pool's ready to open. So yes, Miller Park is closed. It is going to look like more of a battlefield than ever, but we are really starting to make progress, so we're very excited about this.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to try not to mute myself. Good evening, members of council. I've done that. I would have been three for three, but I guess two for three is not bad. I just, this week or last week, I started the riveting task of annual report for the police department, going through data, and I just picked out a few areas that I thought would be of interest to the citizens and city council, especially to the new members of city council. The three main areas that we pay attention to mainly in an annual report or a year-end review is hiring, calls for service, and any type of fundamental, so how we approach crime. And hiring nationally is a very unfavorable topic for law enforcement because it's a very hard thing to do, but I'd like to report that we were extremely successful in hiring. Last year, we hired 10 officers, and in comparison, or to put that in perspective, in 2021, we had 58 officers. 2022, in our report, we had 66. This year, we have almost 75 officers. So I don't know what is working there, but something's working, so we're not going to change anything. But regardless, we're doing very well there. Calls for service is an extremely important number as well. We had 58,000 last year, calls for service, and what that means is an officer did something. There was some activity, whether that be a traffic stop, going to a domestic violence call, robbery, whatever. A call for service is counted as an officer's act. So in 2022, we had 58,000. We had a 10,000, over a 10,000 call for service increase in a year. We were at 69,000. So those officers are coming at a pretty critical time. Fundamentally, we also changed about a year and a half, two years ago, just the way we approach law enforcement here in Lancaster, a little bit more of a proactive approach. So for instance, those of you that had constituents in your ward complaining about certain areas, qualities of life, or certain problems, we had officers go directly attack those problems, and their off-time was spent in problem areas. We also did a little bit of market analysis, if you will, and went out and proactively took care of issues that were popping up on our radar. So for instance, in the fundamentals category, area watches in '21, we did about 2,200. Last year, we did 11,000. What that translates to, and again, I'm in the very early stage of an annual report here, but the three-year going average for burglaries or property crimes is about 277 per year. Last year, we were at 140. So there's something in the water, there's something working there. Only been there a couple of years, so we'll have to figure out exactly what that recipe is, but the officers are doing a very, very good job. The men and women in that department are phenomenal individuals, and I'm very proud of them. One thing that I want council and the citizens to know is our person in crisis calls are going way up. They're skyrocketing, which means we have a job to do. We have to have additional training. We're going to have to figure this issue out, and for those of you out of the know, a person in crisis call would be a mental health issue or some type of mental health breakdown on a call for service. To give some perspective on that, we were averaging around 250 of those per year. Last year, we had 459. So our officers, I'm also proud to say, are almost 100% CIT certified, which is a Critical Crisis Intervention Training. That's not the case for a lot of police departments, but our department did a very good job in doing that, and Chief McDaniel, sitting here, mayor, I need to get used to, was also a very strong and integral part of that, and kicking that off and getting that training to our officers, and now we're almost 100%, which is great news. Just a few updates that I noticed in going through the information from last year. Our DPU is now full-staffed and full-time. That's our directed patrol unit, which attacked quality-of-life issues. We were able to bring the Marx radio system in with the help of city council endorsing that program. Again, I mentioned our recruiting and hiring is very good, and I'm proud to say that just a few weeks ago, we revamped our promotional process. So our promotional process, or what it takes to be a leader in our organization, has been flipped on its head. We've added a new phase that will take into account several factors that we need out of our leaders. So a lot of good things going on at the police department. I can get that annual report out, hopefully by the end of the month, but I thought I'd turn some of that boring, task-oriented stuff I did this week into a presentation, so appreciate everything. If you have any questions, let me know. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Comment? All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any other reports from department heads? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to go back into the regular order of business.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. Will you return to the normal order of business?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to return to the normal order of business. Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
We're now back into the regular order of business. We'll move on to the reading of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution 134-23.
A resolution authorizing this Lancaster city auditor to request in advance of funds from the Fairfield County for the city's apportionment of tax settlements for 2024. Brought forth by Finance, sponsored by Mr. Ailes, and seconded by Mr. Wolfinger.
Mr. President, I'd move that we suspend council's rules and waive the third reading of resolution temporarily numbered 134-23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 134-23. Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
The motion to suspend passes nine to zero.
Mr. President, I move that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record resolution temporarily numbered 134-23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 134-23. Any discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 134-23 passes nine to zero. Moving on to the first reading of resolutions with temporary resolution 124.
A resolution authorizing the Law Director's Office to apply for the Violence Against Women Act grant, coming out of law, sponsored by Mr. Nyheiser, seconded by Mr. Bizjack.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of resolution temporarily numbered 1-24.
Second.
Okay. All right. So we have a, we have a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third readings of temporary resolution 1-24. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Nyheiser?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record resolution temporarily numbered 1-24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 1-24. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 1-24 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 2-24.
A resolution authorizing city departments to dispose of city property no longer needed via auction or internet auction in 2024 and declaring an emergency. It's coming out of council of the whole, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mrs. Teener. Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second, third reading of temporary resolution 224.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 2-24. Discussion?
No, thanks.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 2-24 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 3-24.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to purchase rock salt for the 2024-2025 winter season, coming out of Public Works, sponsored by Ms. Teener and seconded by Mr. Schoonover.
His first of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 3-24. Temporary resolution 4-24.
A resolution to set a 2024 revenue and expense budget in the Water Utility Reserve Fund 6019, amend the certificate with the county auditor, and authorize then and now certificates for payment of bills, coming out of Finance, sponsored by Mr. Wolfinger and seconded by Mr. Ailes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspends its rules and waives the second and third readings of temporary resolution 3-24. Temporary resolution 4-24.
A resolution to set a 2024 revenue and expense budget in the Water Utility Reserve Fund 6019, amend the certificate with the county auditor, and authorize then and now certificates for payment of bills, coming out of Finance, sponsored by Mr. Wolfinger and seconded by Mr. Ailes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspends its rules and waives the second and third readings of temporary resolution 3-24.
4-24.
Or 4-24, I'm sorry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 4-24. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Wolfinger?
I would like to have Denise Cruz come to the podium, please, to discuss what's going on with 424.
Thank you. The 6019 is the Stormwater Utility Reserve Fund. This is the fund that we do capital improvement projects from, and because we appropriate only the funds that are left, we don't know what funds are left until December. We also don't know what balances on our contracts are going to be until December, so we always have to make this appropriation in January, and we always have bills waiting on this appropriation, which is why we asked for the suspension. This appropriation includes some new revenue in the form of transfers from the Stormwater Utility Revenue Fund, and in this case, the Ohio Public Works Commission grant that we received for the Main Street Culvert Project.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or discussions?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter into written record temporary resolution 424.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 4-24. Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 4-24 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 5-24. Temporary Resolution 5-24.
A resolution to set a 2024 revenue and expense budget for the Water Construction Fund 6026, Water Utility Reserve Fund 6027, Waste Water Utility Reserve Fund 6029, Waste Water Construction Fund 6030, amend the certificates with the county auditor, and authorize then and now certificates for payment of bills, coming out of Finance, sponsored by Mr. Wolfinger and seconded by Mr. Aylers.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspends its rules and waives the second and third readings of Temporary Resolution 5-24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading for Temporary Resolution 5-24. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules for 5-24 passes nine to zero. Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 5-24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 5-24. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd hate to have Denise not have an opportunity to speak again.
Thank you. Much like the 6019, these are, again, construction funds that we have to wait until December to see what's there. The majority of this money you'll see is reimbursements or payments by OWDA for the major construction projects, the Lawrence Street wastewater facility, the Miller, the North Water Plant, the Upper Hocking Way Sweater Plant, and the Rock Mill Lateral D Project. So it looks like a lot of money. It's not actually money that I get my hot little hands on. We're just pass-through on it.
Thank you. Any questions? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 5-24 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 6-24.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an engineering agreement for the Salas Handling Facility, coming out of Water Pollution Control, sponsored by Mr. Ailes and seconded by Mr. Ailes.
First of two readings, please.
First of two readings on Temporary Resolution 6-24. Temporary Resolution 7-24.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a local public agency, federal, local LET project agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for the Memorial Pierce Walkways Project, PID 120594, and design pre-construction services contracts with various consultants to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor and the LDOT Improvement Fund 3014, coming out of Code Enforcement and Zoning, sponsored by Mr. Aylers and seconded by Mrs. Hoop.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 7-24. Temporary Resolution 8-24.
A resolution authorizing the City of Lancaster to join the Cooperative Council of Governments and participate in the Qualus Group Cooperative Purchasing Program, coming from Council of the Whole, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second, third reading of Temporary Resolution 824.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend its, the council's rules, waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 8-24. Any discussion?
Just briefly on this piece and the next few council of the whole pieces, I know on the agenda it says three readings. We just decided to suspend. Those are yearly pieces, and they're, us suspending is going to allow the department heads to join those things and buy their items quicker with that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 8-24. Please call the roll.
Yes. Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules for Temporary Resolution 8-24 passes nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 824.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 8-24. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 8-24 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 9-24.
A resolution authorizing the City of Lancaster to participate in the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program, coming from Council of the Whole, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second, third readings of Temporary Resolution 924.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 9-24. Any further discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend Temporary Resolution, the rules for second, third reading of Temporary Resolution 9-24 passes nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 924.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 9-24. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution passes, Temporary Resolution 9-24 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 10-24.
A resolution authorizing the City of Lancaster to participate in the Master Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchasing Agreement administered by Omnia Partners Public Sector, coming out of Council of the Whole, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second, third readings of Temporary Resolution 1024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend rules, waive the second, third reading of Temporary Resolution 10-24. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend Temporary Resolution, the rules, and waive the second, third reading of Temporary Resolution 1024 passes nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 1024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 10-24. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 10-24 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 11-24.
A resolution authorizing the City of Lancaster to participate in the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program, coming from Council of the Whole, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second, third readings of Temporary Resolution 1124.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend our rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 11-24. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend rules and waive the second, third reading of Temporary Resolution 11-24 passes nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 1124.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 1124. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 11-24 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 12-24.
A resolution stating services to be provided by the municipal corporation to annex territory of metro development for the expedited expedited type-two annexation of parcel numbers 0270035930 and 0270035900, consisting of 45.1 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township, and to declare an emergency, coming out of economic development, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mrs. Hoop.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 12-24.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading, Temporary Resolution 12-24. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second, third reading of Temporary Resolution 12-24, pass nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 12-24.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 12-24. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 12-24 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 13-24.
A resolution authorizing the Lancaster Police Department to apply for the 2024-2025 Drug Use Prevention Grant, coming out of Safety, sponsored by Mr. Bizcheck and seconded by Mr. Aylers.
Thank you, first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 13-24.
Law Director Hall, when would we do the walk-on legislation?
Now.
Now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, we do have, we do have walk-on legislation. That would be Temporary Resolution numbered 1424.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the General Fund 1001, authorize then and now certificates for payment of bills and to declare an emergency, coming out of Finance, sponsored by Mr. Wolfinger and seconded by... Mr. Ailes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waives the second and third readings of Temporary Resolution 14-24.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 14-24. Is there any discussion?
Would you like to, Auditor Nettles?
Something that we discovered today between myself and the law director's office that a purchase order that they brought over from 2023 was put as closed in the VIP system. We still, my system shows in audit trail that it was marked closed, but they were saying they didn't. We even contacted our support, software support, that once a 2023 PO was closed in 2024, we can't recoup it. So this is the law director's office trying to reappropriate those funds that got lost on that purchase order. She has bills that needs to be paid coming up shortly.
And I think some of those bills are associated with council as well.
They are, because the former clerk of council had both her expenses as the clerk of council as well as the law director's expenses on that same PO.
Thank you, Law Director Hall.
Thank you.
Auditor Nettles, we appreciate that. Mr. Wolfinger?
Thank you. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 14-24.
I think we have to go with the motion to suspend first. The motion to suspend.
I thought I already did.
We did, we did, but did we call the roll?
We haven't done the roll yet.
We gotta do the roll call. Please call the roll for the motion to suspend.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover? Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution number 1424 passes 9 to 0. Mr. Wolfinger?
I would like, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 14-24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass temporary resolution 14-24. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 14-24 passes 9 to 0. We're gonna move on, hearing no other additional resolutions at this time. Move on to reading of ordinances.
An ordinance establishing a new chapter 377 of the Lancaster Codified Ordinances entitled Utility Vehicles, coming out of law, sponsored by Ms. Teener and seconded by Mr. Wolfinger.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 4523.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 4523. Discussion?
Yes, this is for, so only city departments only can have utility vehicles going through town, so this is not for businesses or private citizens.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 45-23 passes 9 to 0. Temporary ordinance 46-23.
An ordinance to amend the zoning map subject to passage of the annexation of Metro Developments 8.9 plus or minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency, coming out of economic development, sponsored by Mr. Ailes and seconded by Mr... Apologies, sponsored by Mrs. Hoop, seconded by Mr. Nyheiser.
We're all confused.
First of three readings.
It's the third reading. It's the third reading. I think we're confused on the sponsor. Yeah, we're gonna, Mr. Ailes is gonna continue as sponsor and Ms. Hoop will be the second if that's what...
That was my bad, sorry.
I knew what I was doing, but I'm waiting for you all to figure it out.
We'll tell you when you talk.
I was ready. I was ready.
We're all gonna get there. We're gonna get there, folks. Okay, Mr. Ailes?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we pass and engross and enter upon the written record. I can't read my writing. Yes, temporary ordinance 46-23.
One second.
What a mess.
We have a, we have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 46-23. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 46-23 passes 9 to 0. Temporary ordinance 48-23.
An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to contract with the Lancaster Fairfield County Amateur Radio Club for the use of city, of Lancaster radio towers and access to the supporting radio buildings next to the towers, coming out of IT Telecom, sponsored by Ms. Teener and seconded by Mr. Aylers.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 4823.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass temporary ordinance 4823. Any discussion?
Yes, since we have new council people here, and this was brought forth in November, if, Steve, you could come up in just a little synopsis of what this is about so that council, the new council people know, just very briefly. So if they have any questions, too.
So this is a radio system that was on the county tower and it was switched over to the city tower to allow the city to move to the county for the Marx radio.
And at no cost to the city.
Correct.
And so, and they do things like weather and help the police and that type of things, too.
Correct.
So it is helpful to our city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 48-23 passes 9 to 0. There are no second readings of ordinances, so we will move on to the first reading of temporary ordinance 1-24.
An ordinance to release an easement for pipeline K-221 on Fairfield County Tax Parcel Number 0535031610 and to declare an emergency.
And these will be sponsored by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Ms. Teener for this series of ordinances.
Yep. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 124.
Second?
We have a motion to suspend our rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 1-24. Any discussion?
Real quick, 'cause I'm all for speeding through, but can we get a brief synopsis on a couple of these from the law director, please?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, sorry. So there's a housing development that is proposed on South Ewing Street. Some of you may already be aware of that. The developer is a company known as LDG, and LDG, you approved last year that the city financially support their development as it goes out for LITC credits, low-income housing tax credits. They applied for those in December and were turned down, but OFA, the Ohio Housing Finance Authority, has opened another round of applications that will be due in February. And so LDG indicated that one of the things that their underwriters were concerned about the last time was the fact that the city has this easement that bisects the property that they're under contract to purchase and develop. And so they asked the city to release its easement. I've spoken with Curtis Wade at the gas department, and he's indicated that the city has never used the easement for anything and that the line was actually abandoned when the city took it back in 2005. It's also a bit of a liability for the city because there were no regulations about how you abandon a gas line in 2005. Those are more recent, in fact, and so we don't know how it was actually closed and decommissioned. It's running through the middle of a farm field right now, which is not hurting anything, but obviously if LDG wants to build a housing development on top, that's an issue. And so their application is due, I believe, the first of February. And so they ask that we suspend and pass this to satisfy their underwriters and maybe, hopefully, get them a step closer to getting those LITC housing credits.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend rules and waive the second, third reading of temporary ordinance 1-24 passes 9 to 0. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 124.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 1-24. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 1-24 passes 9 to 0. Temporary ordinance 2-24.
An ordinance to accept a donation of approximately 5.199 point, point 199 plus or minus acres, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Be the first of two readings, please.
First of two readings on temporary ordinance 2-24. Moving on to temporary ordinance 3-24.
An ordinance to accept a petition for the annexation of 45.1 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township to consent to annexation and to declare an emergency, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of temporary ordinance 324.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 3-24. Any discussion?
Yes, if Ms. Hall would give us a little detail on this one as well, please.
Sure, absolutely. So this is one I sent out in an email to everybody. As the clerk noted at the top of the meeting, we did receive a petition for annexation from Underhill and Hodge, who represent Double Boogie Holdings, and specifically the petitioners, I can't remember their first names, but they're the trustees of the Shaw Trusts, and they are attempting to annex 45.1 acres off of Shared and Drive to put in a mix of apartments and single-family housing. Based on the Ohio Revised Code, we only have so long to consent to the annexation, and so this piece just marks the fact that we received that petition, we were served with it, and we are consenting to the annexation because the city administration and some of you all on your various committees have been working with the developers to get this underway.
Any further discussion on the motion to suspend the rules on temporary ordinance 324? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend temporary ordinance 3-24 passes 9 to 0. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 324.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 3-24. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 3-24 passes 9 to 0. Temporary ordinance 4-24.
An ordinance pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 709.023C to provide buffer for incompatible land use subject to passage of the annexation of 45.1 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second, third readings of temporary ordinance 424.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to spend, to suspend the rules and waive the second, third reading of temporary ordinance 4-24. Discussion?
Law Director Hall, three times?
Sure, yeah, happy to. So essentially, this is just another piece that we have to pass because we received that petition. The Ohio Revised Code requires us to pass a piece that says if the new territory should be annexed, if the use of that is incompatible with the surrounding land uses, that we will make sure that those surrounding land uses that are already inside the city limits have an appropriate buffer. We don't believe that's going to be an issue here, but that's something that you all will have an opportunity to take a look at again after the zoning map is amended to establish the zoning for that parcel. Currently, ah, directions are not my strong point, but I think that to the north is Thomas Ewing Junior High, and then to the east is a housing complex. To the west, across the road, is outside of the city limits currently. And then there are residential properties to the south as well. So everything around it is pretty much already residential to begin with, but just so you know.
Any further discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second, third reading of temporary ordinance 4-24 passes 9 to 0. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 424.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 4-24. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 4-24 passes 9 to 0. Temporary ordinance 5-24.
An ordinance to amend the zoning map subject to passage of the annexation of 45.1 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, this is the first of three readings?
First of three readings on temporary ordinance 5-24. Law Director Hall, there will be a public hearing set on this. Will we get that, will come up with a date?
Yes, you and the clerk can decide when you would like to do that and let us know.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to temporary ordinance 6-24.
An ordinance to accept the annexation of 8.9 plus or minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second, third readings of temporary ordinance 624.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to waive the rules and waive the second, third reading of temporary ordinance 6-24. Discussion?
Times four.
Yep. So 624 is to finally accept the annexation. So you previously accepted the petition for annexation, but the county commissioners had to rule on that, which they did in late November. And then, once everything was filed, the clerk, your clerk of council, received everything from the county commissioners, and now we have everything that we need so that you can officially accept the annexation of that 8.9-acre parcel that is Metro Developments multi-family housing development right off of Columbus Street on the north side of the city. And that's what this piece is, and the timing is based on the Ohio Revised Code timeline.
Any further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second, third reading of temporary ordinance 6-24 passes 9 to 0. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 624.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 6-24. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
No.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 6-24 passes 8 to 1. Temporary ordinance 7-24.
An ordinance to repeal and replace permanent ordinance 42-23 to amend the zoning map subject to passage of the annexation of 8.9 plus or minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second, third readings of temporary ordinance 724.
Second?
We have a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second, third reading of temporary ordinance 7-24. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to call on Law Director Hall for a fifth time in a row and the final time today, I think.
No worries. So this is just to finalize the change in the zoning map to change the 8.9, 8.9-acre parcel that you just accepted the annexation petition for, or the annexation, not the petition, I'm sorry, the annexation for as residential multi-family.
Any further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend temporary ordinance 7-24 passes 9 to 0. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 724.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 7-24. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers?
No.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser?
Yes.